So it is, it being seven o'clock, we can call our meeting to order and thank everyone for joining us tonight. Real quick, so roll call, Matt Lowry.
Yeah.
Jim Hogan.
Here.
Bill Spalding. Think you may be dialing in. So, and myself, Theo and all, so we have a quorum of three. And Bill. I can unmute you. Yeah, and we're doing our roll call, Bill, so.
Yeah, here.
All right, thank you. And again, no, Kevin York sends his regrets. The, so we have a number of items on the agenda tonight, including the MBTA 3A discussion, and then Clyde Court and A and R, and then some other updates, so. Our second item to date is the approval of the minutes from November twenty eighth. Are there any questions or comments regarding the minutes? And if not, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
All right, thank you, Matt. Thank you. All right, thank you, Bill, and all in favor, Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And myself, I have to abstain, so. Zero one, that's terrific, thank you all. Are there any, any quick comments in the next hundred and twenty seconds? Before we open up our, our public discussion for the MBT three A? I will say, just point to everyone. We do have some notes at the bottom of our agenda regarding our new town planning position for our senior planner, and then links to several of the items that the Planning Board in Wakefield are working on, including this, the MBTA Communities Law and our zoning response to that law, our continued edits to the subdivision control rules and regs, the twenty twenty, twenty thirty-three master plan project, which is currently underway, and we are making some good headway with the zoning bylaw review committee reviewing and updating the the zoning, the zoning bylaws, which we, they will be presenting to the town for consideration in the future. The and we, yeah. And all of our meetings and all of our minutes are posted on the website as well. So.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yeah, Jim.
One of the things that board person York wants, he sent his, when he sent it regards on the side, he asked me to give an update that could probably be between now and the start regarding the bylaw review committee.
Yep, yep.
Um, so Kevin indicated that he sent the zoning bylaws that Attorney Bobrowski will discuss at the next meeting on Monday to the board last week, and he wanted to remind the Planning Board that if there's any questions or comments to make sure they review that set of zoning bylaws that Kevin's pushed to the balance of the board.
That's terrific, that's a, yeah, a great reminder, thank you very much, and nice to nice to move that along. All right. Thank you, Jim, it's seven oh five, and we want to open our public discussion, this being our third public discussion about the MBTA three A community overlay. It's also, also known as. So you'll hear from Jim and the, the presentation will take about fifteen to twenty minutes, and then we do want to open it up for question and answer regarding the law and the work of the working group, and really just some house, housekeeping items, it's really important that when you raise your hand and we call on you that you unmute your phone, turn on your camera if possible, and definitely give us your name and your address, so we know who you are and where you're calling from, we've got a lot of people on the call tonight, and we have fifty-five minutes allotted, so we want to hold folks to three minutes each, and really, this is a reminder, this is about Q and A, and if you've heard your comment addressed previously, or your question addressed previously or asked previously, if you can summarize it, and we'll make every attempt to, to answer it, or refer you back to the, the previous answer, just so that this is going to allow us to hear from everyone tonight within the, the time allowed. And if, if there are more, more thoughts or questions, comments, yeah, we, we want to capture as, as many of them as possible. And I want to just ask everyone at, at the beginning of this process to thank Jim and Aaron and Matt and everyone on the, the zoning by the working group for their efforts to understand the law, to interpret it and to apply it in this proposal that Jim is going to share with you tonight. So thank you very much, and Jim, the mic is yours.
Thank you, can, can you see my screen, Theo? Okay, so in that case, everyone, thank you for tuning in, my name, as Theo mentioned, is Jim Hogan, I'm the vice chair of the Planning Board, as well as the chairperson of the working group that has been convened by the town to review and address the, what's called section three A, or chapter forty of the MBTA zoning requirement, so we put together this presentation, I'll go through the presentation, and I'm sure that there'll be other questions and concerns that we have some backup slides if people have specific things they want to talk about. So just as a summary of what we're talking about, the three A is a law that was passed a couple of years ago, where the, the state is requiring communities that are serviced by MBTA commuter rail, late transit, or buses to comply, to pass a multifamily zoning district where multifamily zoning is allowed as of right. The working group referenced, consists of members of the Town Council, Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, Environmental Sustainability Committee, and was convened for the purpose of evaluating how Wakefield wants to address this law. The working groups come up with a proposed district, which would be the base of this presentation, and the district that you will see is not finalized, there's some conversations that are happening whether or not that this is the appropriate one to go to town meeting, but this is the, what the work, where the working group is today. We're still in the process of trying to, you know, absorb the feedback we've been receiving from this public forum, as well as the previous ones to date. So this, the proposed district you're going to see will comply with the state zoning requirements. It will center the proposed district around the Wakefield commuter rail station. It allows, as a right developments, to be three stories in height, which is consistent with the existing buildings in that area, and a maximum of four units per lot. And then the, the, one of the main strategies on this is that we're trying to keep our commercial streets commercial by excluding commercial parcels along North Ave, Main Street, and Albion to protect the commercial character of our downtown business area. So just some, some background as it relates to why the state is doing this, and some of these slides are new for folks who have tuned into previous, previous conversations, but if you look from nineteen ninety to twenty twenty, the, the median sale of a home in Massachusetts, in Greater Boston, has gone from a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars up to six hundred and forty. So, you know, obviously, incomes have, have grown over that time, but haven't grown by nearly four, four times. So the region in general is having high supply, or sorry, high prices, and one of the major reasons that the state has identified this is that there's no new supply coming online. Massachusetts permits half the units as the average US state, and based on this, the state estimates that there's approximately a shortage of two hundred thousand housing units in Massachusetts. So what are some of the impacts of this housing shortage and these high prices? We're starting to lose people as a region. Greater Boston lost approximately fifty thousand people in twenty twenty-one, you can see that this is a graph of the net people leaving Greater Boston, and the people entering Greater Boston, and the difference between the red and the purple over years is the net people leaving our region. So zoom, zooming into Wakefield, what does this mean? So if you just go and you pull red, you know, publicly available Redfin data, the average house cost in October of twenty eighteen, five years ago, was five hundred and thirty thousand dollars, now it's up to seven hundred. Housing market, that from a competitive standpoint, Redfin rates, this is one of the most competitive markets, you know, among the most competitive markets in that, you know, highly competitive rating, and in the past five years, we homes in Wakefield have been increased by thirty-five percent, this is a dynamic you're going to find in a lot of communities around throughout Greater Boston, but this is, these are some of the reasons why the state is, is looking to implement this section three across any of the communities that are serviced by the MBTA. So that's the background of why we're talking about this, some of the things just for people to keep in mind as we're going through the rest of the presentation. When we talk about as of right, that means that the development project may proceed without the need for a special permit, a variance, zoning amendment, a waiver, or any type of discretionary approval. In this case, the way that a lot of our zoning is set up is that a developer would need a special permit, which means a discretionary permit where you could either grant it or not grant it, depending on the town's willingness to accept deviations from the base zoning. And then from the state's perspective, multifamily means three units or more. Although, for the purposes of this conversation with what the proposal is, it's going to be four units as a maximum. So those are some of the, the terms that we're talking about, what about some of the, the, you know, do we even need to do this with the state? The states made it pretty clear that they don't view this law as optional with different communities, you know, back when it, this was first proposed and passed in twenty twenty, the state identified a handful Housing Choice Initiative, Local Capital Prox, the Projects Fund, Mass Works Infrastructure Programs, that communities that didn't comply through any of the, you know, the different milestones would not be eligible to receive great grant fundings, Wakefield's received, you know, a little over three and a half million dollars from these programs over the last three years, there's more that are around the doorstep being approved that could increase that number by, you know, between five and six hundred thousand dollars, to my understanding. However, when, with the turn of the new administration, the Healy administration added an additional fourteen programs are added that non-compliance turn towns would be eligible to receive, and you can see a full list in the backing doc, backup documentation if you so choose. You know, besides those things in terms of the grant funds that you would be, be eligible for, various members from the governor, the new housing secretary, the attorney general have all basically said, we do not view this as optional, and communities that resist the state's this law, there will be other undefined impacts associated with not complying. So what are we actually being asked to do? The key requirements of the state law for the multifamily district, as it, as it relates to Wakefield is, we have to have a zoning, a zone where multifamily can be allowed as of right, and that zone, if you took all the parcels as they exist today, and you zeroed out all the houses on it, and you rebuilt it as of right, you have to have a zone that could accommodate one thousand six hundred and ninety-six units. Over the minimum density, you know, that's about a hundred and fourteen acres, the, one of the key elements is that you have to have a density of fifteen units per acre, you have to locate it near transit site. In our case, our commuter rail stations, you can't have an age restriction, so for senior housing, for example, except because it has to be suitable for families with children, so you can't say, all these units have to be studios, for example. Again, for the state law, multifamily means three units plus per, per house. So what's actually in Wakefield today? We don't have any district where a multifamily, as defined by the state, is allowed as of right, we do have a larger number of areas in our downtown that where two families are allowed as of right, and that's where we're really centering this proposed district. So the district that you see on the screen is the district that the working group has come up with, of what we're proposing for the multifamily zoning district to comply with the state. You can see it's centered around the Wakefield commuter rail station, as well as Main Street and that bus route that we have, which was a major consideration for the working group. You can also see that there is a kind of a hole in this district where North Ave, Albion, and Main Street are, the reason being is that when the law was originally passed, there's no option to have multifam, or sorry, mixed use as a requirement part of the law, we came up with this strategy to exclude our commercial corridors. After, you know, back, back in August, the state came up with, I would say, an overly convoluted way where you could include mixed use as a portion of this, but when the working group looked at it, we felt as if that, based on where we were in the entitled, or in the process of developing this, that we didn't think it was worth going back and revisiting it, especially because the law is complicated enough, and we thought that the additional complications they added didn't make a lot of sense for where we were as a community. So what does this district look like compared to the zoning that we're, that's allowed today? So you can see our red area is our business district, the yellow is our general residence, and white is single, and our purple is industrial for the zoning layer that you see. The dash blue line is where the proposed zone that we're talking about is located, so you can see there's a lot of overlap with business and general residents where you can allow two units as of right today, and now we'd be going from two to four. So as everyone can, can probably appreciate, all the houses that exist on the lots that exist here today aren't all maxed out to two units, so my expectation is that if and when this is passed, you know, there will be some units that will be go from what the existing houses today, but it won't necessarily, all of them will go to four uniformly across as the existing buildings are all twos across wherever it's allowed. So from the dimensional requirements that we're talking about, so the proposed district that the working group has developed would have a allowable unit count of two thousand three hundred and fifty-five units compared to the one thousand six hundred and ninety-six units required by the state law. The density is, you know, about as low as we could get, sixteen units per acre, as opposed to the minimum of the fifteen. If you look at the existing zoning that's on the books today in Wakefield, or our existing mixed-use zoning, specifically with the garden apartment compliance method, you, the maximum stories, the building height, and the parking spaces are all materially similar to what the working group is proposing for this new multifamily district to comply with the state law. So what does that actually look like? In terms of what these buildings may look like, so what we've done is we've gone, we've gone through, we've pulled some existing units that exist today in the districts that we're talking about, so you can see there's a four unit on Pleasant Street, Richardson Ave, there's a four unit on, you know, four thousand square foot lot. Wakefield Ave, there's this three unit, and then Avon, there's another building with four units on it, you know, these are all buildings that exist today, so it's, you know, it's not like that, this type of as of right building is something that would be completely foreign to these neighborhoods that we're talking about. And then, you know, what would, what would we anticipate that some of the units would look like in terms of if this goes through, and what the, you know, development may look like? So we thought this is a decent proxy, this building is complete on Chestnut Street in twenty twenty-two, it has three units, one per floor, you know, on a roughly seven thousand square foot lot. So if you look for the overall development context, you can see, this is a map of all of the where the proposed multifamily zoning district is, and, uh, you know, a picture of all of those houses that I showed in the, in the previous slide, you know, what existing housing stock looks like today. From an overall town perspective, the town has a little bit over eleven thousand total housing units today. If you look at the housing for the district that we are proposing, the existing houses in that district is sixteen forty-one. If you took all the houses in the district, and you zeroed them out, and then you maxed out the as of right zoning, you would have two thousand three hundred and fifty-five, so that would allow an additional approximately seven hundred units as of right over the current building stock as it exists today, represents about six percent of the total housing stock, now we all know we're not going to max, you know, you're not going to see every lot maxed out to the exactly the four units, there will be some amount of that seven hundred will be realized, and the other thing to realize is that if we change the geometry of the district, that sixteen forty-one of the current housing units will change because you changed the, the the area that you're including. In general, the district that the working group is proposing represents approximately three percent of the land in Wakefield. So reasons why the, that, that we're proposing this district as the working group, you know, from statewide, as a reminder, the three A law was passed because it wanted to address a region-wide housing supply issue, where we've got the, that shortage of approximately two hundred thousand housing units in Massachusetts. From a Wakefield perspective, the working group, some of the reasons why we made some of the choices that we made on this district in particular, was that we wanted to center the district around the Wakefield Business District. Drive economic development by increasing foot traffic in the downtown business by having more people live near our businesses. We wanted to increase housing options near what we thought were the best train, some of the best transit options in the community, specifically the Wakefield Junction, commuter rail station, as well as not losing sight of the fact that we've got the bus line that runs along Main Street. We wanted to try to increase the housing options by expanding the supply, potentially having units that may be slightly different than all single-family housing that's allowed in the majority of Wakefield today. In addition, we wanted to make sure we excluded our commercial streets, so you didn't see, for example, a building on Albion Street that may be a one, one-story commercial building that gets knocked down and replaced with a as of right, four-unit housing, and we want to keep that commercial and potentially mixed use, we have mixed-use zoning that's on the books in our zoning today that could be used, utilized with a special permit, which gives the town a little bit more control over that development process, we thought that was the better zoning path. So a, as a reminder for, for folks who are tracking, you know, we're up to approximately, you know, a little less than twenty meetings that we've been talking about, they're all recorded, and people can go take a look at all the, the back and forth that has been going forward on this, and I'm sure there'll be a, a number more between now and when we get to our town meeting, when we're going to be presenting this, so. Beginning that, talking about on the implementation schedule, so we're going through the, the planning board forums, this is the last one that's currently on the books, we're anticipating we're going to be doing some revisions and finalizing the bylaw, and then getting to a town meeting for the springtime, where we'd have, and we anticipate there'll be a vote on this, between now and then. This, the, a district will be referred to Town Council, then to the Planning Board, the Planning Board's going to have, uh, my understanding is, we're, we're still trying to figure out the exact schedule, but it sounds like we're going to have two public meetings where there'll be additional times for the public to write feedback on this, and then be ready for a town meeting. If and when, for whatever reason, something happens at town meeting, and we don't get a vote in the spring, we have the town fall meeting as a backup, because we have to have a compliant district by the end of twenty twenty-four, otherwise, some of those penalties I referenced early in the presentation will kick in from the state. So in summary, town leadership intends to comply with the section three A law on the basis of the financial repercussions, and frankly, the undefined impacts from the state leadership that the governor, housing secretary, attorney general, all identified. So multifamily district of some kind will be presented to the town before the deadline, so that the people of Wakefield can make a, a decision regarding compliance or not. The proposed, this proposed district that we're talking about today is in full compliance with the state zoning law, the proposed district maintains our eligibility for state grants and provides competitive advantages for other state grants, provides an opportunity for Wakefield to help our local, you know, Wakefield-specific, and also our regional housing supply issue, increasing the hat, number of housing options for Wakefield residents, takes it so we're going to center our growth around our downtown business area, and by doing so, having more people live near our businesses downtown, increase foot traffic, and hopefully support our downtown businesses. So with that, there's more information, if people are interested in going to the Planning Board, we have a website, we have a number of these presentations, as well as recordings of all the meetings that are available for anyone to take a look at, and if you want to learn more. Some of the frequently asked questions we get is, you know, are this, is this, is this a housing mandate from the state? The answer is no. The state is requiring zoning that allows for new development to be created, but doesn't specifically set a housing quota, so this isn't the state saying you have to build X number of units, you just have to have a zone that could allow for that. Does this impact Wakefield's forty B status? It's one of the things we get a lot, we get a lot. Based on the way forty B, for those of those who don't know, forty B is a law where if you don't have a specific amount of affordable or subsidized housing within the town, it allows for developers to use this forty B process to circumvent local zoning. Any new housing supply that's brought online by section three A won't impact the forty B status in terms of new supply until at least twenty thirty, because it's based the neck, the amount of housing units that are used to calculate, you know, how many units you need for the ten percent won't be re-based lined until after the twenty thirty census. Until then, the multifamily district, any units that are delivered that are not affordable, won't be associated with that. Why Wakefield Station, not Greenwood Station, it's a great question, and it's one that we've looked at. Essentially, the density required to meet the law around Greenwood in the section that the working group evaluated was too high. The way that the state law is written, six-unit buildings roughly would have had to be allowed as of right to Greenwood to meet the minimum density calculations on the section that we're looking at. As I mentioned, there are some reevaluations of that in terms of potentially looking at a district that may be a little farther away from Greenwood Station, and maybe that ends up changing what the proposed final map would be that will go to town meeting, but that's something that's, we're still in the process of taking a look at. Can the units be age restriction, restricted? No. Law doesn't allow senior-only housing, for example, to be the only way to comply with this law. Will that, new units be rentals or condos? The answer is kind of depends on the proposed district doesn't require homeownership. New units under the district are permitted to be either condos or rental, depending on the homeowner or the developer who, you know, is there, is there a law, the, the, the law itself is agnostic as it relates to rentals or condos. And does the district require affordable housing? The one that we are proposing today does not. We would have loved to. The way the law is written is that our, our interpretation is that you had to have made it so you mandate maximum ten percent affordable housing. Way we read it is that you'd have to have, uh, ten units as a right, because if you have only four units, and one of them has to be affordable, that's twenty-five percent. The state had this alternate way where you could do this economic compliance model, which we didn't think was likely to result in the state approving anything above that ten percent based on some preliminary, uh, review that we did. We do still have our eighteen percent inclusionary zoning for larger multifamily, mixed-use multifamily through our other mixed-use development zoning that's on the books today, this does not impact that at all. So with that being said, you know, love to open it up to questions and answers, I, I apologize if, if, uh, folks, um, if there's a lot in here, so if there's anything that I wasn't clear enough, I'm more than happy to, to try to explain it as, as clearly as possible. So with that being said, when we call on someone's name, please make sure that you state your name, the uh, your address, and then turn on your camera if you have the ability to do so. And then as a reminder, uh, Chairperson Noel indicated that we're going to be trying to limit comments to three minutes, so with that being said, I see the first raised hand is Julie.
Hi, can you hear me and can you see me?
Yes.
Okay, great, um, thank you so much, you guys have put in a ton of time, I've watched most of your meetings more than once. I really appreciated you going out of your way to meet with the Traffic Advisory Committee on December first, I would recommend that anybody who hasn't watched it definitely watch it, there was a lot of new information, the committee, unfortunately, though, wasn't shown, I think there are two versions of the plan, one that could include Greenwood. I wish they were shown both, I would have loved to have heard what they would have had to say about the other possibility.
Hold up one sec, Julie, we didn't get your street address, sorry.
Sorry, for Central Street, sorry. Thanks. Many streets either have been made or will be made one way through the envision process, I've been going through most, to most of those meetings, I think they started in two thousand seventeen, and I'm concerned that we started that process, we had VHB, we've had a couple of town meeting votes where we've put a lot of money toward those studies, and I'm afraid that this has come in way after the fact, and I know, um, having watched the Town Council meeting last night, Chief Scori and the Traffic Advisory Committee has been really trying to preserve parking downtown for the small businesses, we have two part-time people who take care of parking, and I, I bring that up because you guys were talking a lot at the Traffic Advisory Committee meeting about parking. So I, again, I hope everybody who's at this meeting tonight watches that meeting, it's really important. Many streets either have been.
Do you mind if I pause you for a second?
Yeah.
Just to, so for people who don't know what Julia's talking about, we presented to the Traffic Advisory Committee, one of the things that came up during the working group and the back and forth is whether or not the current zoning calls for one and a half units, or one and a half piece, parking spaces per unit, and there was some thought that, that might be a, to go down from that on the basis of less parking spaces means potentially less cars and less traffic, so we ran that by the Traffic Advisory Committee, I think we heard pretty definitively, they disagreed with that line of thinking, So we ran that by the Traffic Advisory Committee. I think we heard pretty definitively they disagreed with that line of thinking and they advocated to keep the one and a half. Parking spaces per unit. So sorry, Julie, to interrupt. I just wanted to to clarify for folks.
That can't take from, that can't take from my three minutes, I hope. Parking was the thrust of that um meeting last night as well. Um, Chief Scori does, is not in favor of parking permits. He's not in favor of adding signage to neighborhoods. He was pretty clear about that last night in the Lake District, Lakeside Area District. Um, the Traffic Advisory Committee is the only town body in Wakefield that has a, a traffic engineer serving on it. These meetings over the past year and a half or so have expressed. Um, the experts stating the need to keep parking in our downtra- downtown areas accessible for small businesses. Um, VHB was the engineer that we went with. I think there's been a slight modification. I think I heard that we're with a different engineering firm right now. The studies on our downtown took place during two thousand eighteen ish up until about twenty twenty. I went to most of those meetings. The thrust of this enormous MBTA initiative is again a new addition. It was not counted in the planning that we have already paid for and had engineers working toward in our downtown and I'm, I'm, I am concerned about that. Has VHB or any of the engineering firms that we're working with now? Um, that we've been relying on for our downtown renovations, have they been brought in on this initiative? And involved in the planning. We have so many main artery streets that are going to be used for our, by our first responders that are. Involved in this plan. I'm concerned that adding more density, more people. And more cars to these specific areas that you see in blue do not keep response times as a priority. And this affects all who live in Wakefield. The main artery streets, I'm thinking of it like the heart, like human heart. With the main arteries and the veins and things like that. The main artery streets in our downtown are clogged during school start. And ending times already. We've got the Galvin. We've got the high school. People have to reach those two areas of town. Through all areas of our community. So everybody ends up meeting. In the downtown area. It seems that all roads lead to the high school, the Galvin.
Yeah, so, so Julie, um, yeah, we're, we're coming up at that three minute mark and um. Uh, I, I really appreciate what, what you're saying. I, I heard. Uh, a couple of questions. Um, have VHS, VHB or other town engineers? Been consulted on this um and your concerns about uh response times?
Well, I also did ask you guys earlier with a letter to have our state leaders involved in these meetings. Um, our infrastructure is old. I ask again that in the future, our state leaders sit through these meetings with us. And my final thought is again, I ask that the planning board focus on the minimum district plan because I think the plan is presented. Will not pass at town meeting. I agree with um Counselor McLean. I believe he said that. At the um Traffic Advisory Committee. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. I see the next uh, next person who has the hands uh hands raised is Stacy Constance.
Yep. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Hi, I'm Stacy Constance, twenty five Wave Avenue. I don't think I'll need a full three minutes. I just wanted to speak in favor of the district. And of the, of the plans. When I looked at the presentation. Prior to the meeting and I saw that something like sixty one percent of our housing is occupied by one or two residents. That number really snapped my head around. I, I, we all know about the housing shortage. Everywhere, including in Wakefield. We all know people who are desperately looking for houses. This isn't even affordable housing. You know, this is, this is, uh, this is just, uh, you know, beautiful new housing. Is it a little denser than a one, a, a, a one family on a one lot? I guess so, yes, but. Uh, you know, just saying no. It seems to me to be really short sighted for the growth of the, of our town. Um, and it was interesting to me too to see that the schools uh is projected aren't really affected by this. Um, their school population is significantly down in recent years and. I, I manned a table at Wakefield one O one recently and I was really. Uh, interested to see that a huge number of people that were coming through. Were retirees who have moved into some of the new condo developments that have been going up. So. You know, and, and they like the walkability and they like, you know, they like the public transportation. So. I, I think I'm just all, I, I'm very much in favor of this. I've looked carefully at the, at the pop, at the, at the proposals. I live. Right on the border of this. So you know, it's not like I won't be affected. I hope I am affected. So. Um, I just wanted to, to raise my voice in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Stacy. Uh, I think the next person I see is Bronwyn.
Uh, yes, Bronwyn Delavopee, Cyrus Street. Thank you again for the, the presentation. Um. I was wondering if anyone had some information about how many units of added. Uh, to our inventory or would be needed to realize lower rents or lower housing costs. And I'll pause my, my minutes. For someone to answer.
Uh, I think as it relates to a specific number, I think that that is something that. I can't give you and I think that it would be uh. It would be. Something that. Wakefield by itself and the number of units that we could deliver. Probably are not gonna move the needle versus the greater Boston metro in general. But there's not a specific number that can be given for that because as everyone understands. Vagaries of the, of the marketplace means that. Other things may impact housing above and beyond what we're talking about for just one rezoning effort.
Yeah, and I, I would just jump in. Um, the, the housing market's really dynamic and uh. Interest rates, uh, tax rates, uh, you know, uh. The strength of our schools, um, all of that really does combine um into a very complicated uh. Uh, pricing and you know, a lot of it is um driven by. By demand and uh and interest. So I think the first pride, the. One of the first drivers really is interest rates and with interest rates being so high and a lack of housing supply. That has ri- resulted in um. The housing pricing staying high and until you get more stock. Um. Uh, the housing prices, you know, won't are, are gonna be like artificially uh. Uh, stuck and and the, the rents uh trend in the same way. Um.
Thank you. Ye- yes, I, I, I see that, but the, the point still is that. The purpose of this law is to ease the housing crunch. If you look at the number of apartments. In the whole area, not just Wakefield, but in the whole area, Boston and surrounding areas. People are not renting these apartments. The rents are too high. People are not moving. Uh, there are, if you go online to any, any number of the um. Rental sites, you'll see apartments that have been listed for weeks or months and that are empty. I, so. I'm having a little a bit of a difficulty reconciling this new growth to Wakefield. Um, with the reality of the housing market right now. Um, there are myriad towns who are pushing back. The pushback against this law is um growing uh by the week. Uh, Marshfield, Middleborough, Woburn, Reading, Holden, Ipswich, Burlington, Stonem. Uh, they've all denounced this and many, many more have denounced this. Um, m- my question is. Is this working group going to continue to do the mi- the, the, the plan to do more than the minimum? Um, or do they plan to, um, in lieu of all the um. Public input on this, will they go to the minimum uh re- required by law? Thanks.
So I think the, the, one of the reasons why we're here today and we've had the numerous presentations previous to this. Is based on all the feedback we're getting. The working group has a meeting that's scheduled for next week. Having a further conversation regarding the. Trying to address all this feedback and determine the next steps. I can't say I have a crystal ball and we can tell you what the, that body will say in terms of. An overall decision, but I think that we definitely have gotten a lot of feedback and it's one of the things that we'll review at our next meeting in order to determine. Uh, what we think is the appropriate next step. Uh, I think to see the next person is uh Dawn. And Dawn, you're still muted and as a reminder, just to say your name and your address.
Hi, Don Valerio, Frank Street. I want to thank everyone in the working group, planning department for all the hard work you've done for, God, two years now or something like that. Um, so just, I have a bunch of questions, but one quick one would be. Um, you know, why jumping from the minimum district size up to the proposed is. You know, something like seven hundred more units, is that correct?
A- approximately.
So it sounds like a lot for people, um. You know, myself included, it sounds, sounds like a lot of units. Uh, could be up to. You know, hundred and eighty more. Lots turned into four families if you wanted to break it down that way. So it sounds like a lot. Is there any way it could be a little less? Could it be three fifty, four hundred? Is how, how would that work?
Yeah, so I, I think one of the things that we're, the working group is looking at based on some feedback is an alternative, I'll call it minimum compliance pathways. I think. One of the reasons why the working group, so. With the you, with the caveat that. I don't think anyone's gonna sit here and tell you that the three A law from state was written in, in a, the best manner, right? I think there's a lot of. Reasons to pick next with the way the law was written, but the working group said. We have this law, we have an opportunity to look at this and try to be thoughtful and proactive in terms of how we're gonna shape development within the downtown. Community. And so what we thought is that. Outside of even trying to comply with state law, that what we're, this proposed district is, is good. You know, uh, we think that if we're trying to think about. Being proactive, where would we want to see new housing in Wakefield be delivered? We thought that this district represents a spot that would be a good opportunity because if we had housing that was built up to four. Units per lot, which is consistent with a lot of buildings that already exist today, then. It would potentially increase the density in a manner around our town center. Where there'd be more people that will live near our businesses and hopefully would frequent them by walking and or. Be having access to the T and the, you know, the via the commuter rail and the bus stop. So. We do think that the, that, you know, the expansion of the Zid district was a, a good idea frankly and is thoughtful. I think that we've heard some pushback as it relates to that, you know, if people agree with that assessment. And that's part of what we're trying to make sure we're getting the feedback from everyone so we can go back and review it as a group. I, I hope that answers your question.
Hmm, yes, um. It's, it's a little confusing, the whole thing to me, but I'm trying to, trying to get it straight in my head, but um. And then the other, my other question would be, if I may, I have another quick one. As a friend of mine lives in Lexington and he has um. A two family and, and the other day he's telling me he's gonna turn it into a four family. So I started saying, well, how was, you know, how are you doing that? And then. Started talking about the multifamily district in Lexington and they, they have it set up a lot differently than Wakefield. Are you familiar with how they do it there?
Uh, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent familiar. I am familiar that Lexington was one of the first communities that passed a multifamily zoning compliant. Or a section three A compliant zone. It was relatively recent. I want to say maybe in the last four or five months.
That's right.
Hmm. Yeah, it seems like they have multiple smaller districts running along the entire length of Mass Avenue, uh, which is a bus line. So, you know, seems like Wakefield's got a kind of a similar situation with a train track running north and south through the entire town. Um, you know, it's just something to look at. It's all, it's on their website. I poked around their website today, noticed uh. A lot of stuff on there. Um, but do you think that's something worth the planning department looking at?
Um, it's something that we can bring to the working group and uh have, you know, bring it up as a potential uh alternate to the other ones that we're already looking at. So, uh, thank you, Dawn, for the comments. I think we're up for time. So if you, if you, I'm looking to switch everyone, but thank you for, for hopping on. Um, the next person I've got is uh, is uh Mike McLean.
Yeah. Hi, Jim. This is Mike McLean, nineteen Fairmount Ave. Um, appearing tonight as a citizen, although obviously, you know, I can't ignore the fact that I'm on the town council. Um, I want to give you a couple of, I'm timing myself. I want to give you a couple of. Ideas and suggestions and also. You know, maybe um try to separate fact from opinion. Um, we had a housing uh choice uh award today and I happened to have the pleasure of speaking with Ed Augustus, who is the Secretary of. Housing in livable communities and the chief uh person running forty eight. Uh, it was stated to me and I believe this is a fact that there's nothing preventing us from doing a minimum district. Um, Ed Augustus said the Massachusetts vacancy rate, not that this is terribly relevant, is one point seven percent. So if we're at four point four. We're doing a little better than the state average. Um, I've advocated for the minimum district for a while. I think that's pretty public. I've watched all the working group meetings. I was the only public participant at one of them. And you guys have also presented at the town council and we've given you some of our thoughts. Um, we have three train, two train stations in Wakefield. We have Greenwood and we have Wakefield uh Station. I believe that. The, what Jim said is that, you know, the part you looked at was, was not, didn't work, but that was thirty seven acres. Uh, I would like you to look at the entirety of the circle. Um, on our January filing uh that Aaron Cookinda signed, we also noted that we are also within striking distance of Melrose Highlands. So I think when, I think uh Matt Lowry had indicated to me that, you know, if we use two five hundred. Acre circles, you know, there'd be a lot of Greenwood that we could be looking at. And I've sent you emails. Uh, I pointed out Greenwood is closer to the city. Uh, Greenwood's a five, you know, closer to the Oak Grove. You know, there's, to me, Greenwood has a business di- district. There isn't any reason, you know, not to be looking for multiples. We do have to have that one fifty percent contiguous. I think the west side and the patch to the east, you know, between Albion and Church is going to cover us. Uh, even if we go to a minimum, but those are numbers that Aaron can play with and, and look at. Um, I think forty four, we should be very careful with this. I don't think it's a good, good way to plan. Uh, you know, I think we're gonna have a check the box uh situation where, you know, as a matter of right. Um, if they meet the specs, they're gonna be able to do this. It's a matter of opinion as to how many of these units are gonna convert. None of us really knows. Um, but I think we should go with the minimum district. I think it still provides exactly what the Commonwealth is looking for and I think we should be looking at. Uh, you know, not just the five hundred acre circle around Wakefield Station. I think we should trim some of that back and look towards Greenwood and possibly even look towards uh South Greenwood, towards the uh. Um, mu- much of which is within a half mile of uh, of the Melrose Station. Um. We. You know, I, I, I do disagree that we shouldn't be concerned about forty B because there's no affordability requirement here. And if you talk to anybody on the Han Street or Stark Ave, they'll tell you, you know, forty B is very important. We're not at ten percent yet. Twenty thirty sounds like a long way off, but we're almost at twenty twenty four. I think we have to be very cognizant of, you know, forty B and forty A right now. Uh, the town is uh, you know, trying to fight some of the units forty B projects and we're doing it. Uh, having not reached ten percent. We're doing it based on a safe harbor. Uh, so, you know, the amount of affordable units that we're gonna get out of this are zero. So I can't see going beyond the minimum. And if we want to do good planning beyond the minimum. We can do it. We've already done it around Wakefield Station. There's, you know, with, with our overlay districts, there's no reason why we cannot do something. But I think doing it within the bounds of forty eight beyond the minimum, uh frankly, I, I totally disagree with it and I think it's dangerous. Um, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you. And for those who may not be aware, one of the things that the counselor had mentioned as it relates to. Greenwood and the alternate districts, that's what I was referring to is that some of that feedback has come back in terms of. Um, trying to evaluate some of those other maps and we're in, in the process. Aaron Cookinda from the town staff is developing some, I'll call it alternative. Maps that the working group is gonna be evaluating at our next uh meeting. So, um. Next person I see is uh Tiana.
Hi, I'm Tiana Veldwisch at twenty eight West Water. So I'm uh towards the bottom of that middle section there. Um, I just want to say, and this may, may not be popular opinion, but I'm generally in favor of there being. More development, particularly in the area around the, the MBTA. I think that's the whole premise of. Adding more density and more housing where is commuter, commuter accessible uh into the city is exactly the direction I believe. Which Wakefield should be going. Uh, you know, we moved to Wakefield to be on the train line. My partner commutes. On the commuter rail every day to work. We love being that close to the commuter rail. We love being close to the business district and, and Main Street and all the. The businesses in town. I think that's a major draw for, for young families like mine to come to our, our town. And I think having more variety of housing stock of multifamilies, we would, we would have loved to, to get a two family. Uh, when we moved in and, you know, there weren't very many uh multifamilies. Uh, when we moved in and, you know, there weren't very many uh multifamilies around that, uh, you know, that met our needs. Uh, but we're, you know, I think having more density, more variety of housing in the area that is near the train is great for. Everyone to be able to commute and work in the city and bring more economic development to Wakefield. So. I just want to say I'm very supportive, um, and I I would. Urge us to look at keeping the parking. Uh, reasonably low for these i- in this district, because if the whole idea is you're near a train. You don't need to have two or three uh cars per unit, and um I hope that we can uh not continue to add more. Uh. Uh, you know, paved over space in our town, considering that we need more wetland, more um. Uh, space that can absorb water as uh heavier rains and bigger storms come. So I think less parking would be great if uh if you're in this zone near the train. So. That is my personal feedback. I really appreciate everything the working group is doing to consider all these options and uh think about. The direction the town is going. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, moving to the next uh next uh. Participant, I see, uh, I think it's iPhone right now. If you could unmute and state your name and address.
Um, this is Eleanor Axelrod, and I apologize, I dialed in on my phone. I live on Sheffield Road. I lived for ten years, however, on Walnut Street. Um, which is nine Walnut, which is right in this district. And I have two questions for you. So so I wanna um. Ask the first one and move on to the second. Just trying to understand the density requirements. I understand it's. To be compliant, it's fifteen. Um, units per acre. So that works out to about um twenty nine hundred square feet per unit. So I I am a little concerned about. It being too dense, because if you look at a street like Walnut Street. Um, each of the the parcels is roughly like four thousand square feet. Um, and so now you're gonna put. Potentially. I guess what I'm trying to understand, you're. Would you allow on any parcel four units? So conceivably. You know, the whole street could just be turned over into. Four units. You know, which is. Less than a thousand feet per unit, essentially. No green space left over. You know, you have to do off-street parking for some, you know, for these cars to plug in their EVs. Um, because there's not enough parking on the street as there is today, like how? How, I guess. Are there any other caveats to that density such as setback laws? Or, you know, other ways to get around that, so it's not so dense in such a small area?
Yep, it's a great question. So there's a handful of dimensional requirements that we didn't get into the weeds on in this presentation. That we're proposing as part of this overlay district, specifically some of them that address your concerns are related to. Minimum lot size. So minimum lot size for any multifamily district would be four thousand square feet. There'd be a minimum requirement for open space associated, I believe that's thirty percent off the top of my head. There'd be a requirement for some sort of outdoor space for the residents. There is also. A requirement to meet setbacks that are consistent with the setbacks for our multifam, or sorry, our mixed-use zoning. So we basically took that set of dimensional setback requirements and copy pasted it. In order to try to maintain as much of that consistency as possible with the zoning on the books today. In addition, we also are including as part of the proposed district in the bylaw, which is in the process of being finalized, but we're we're pretty far along in it. We're also including a site plane review that would go to the planning board. So the planning board would have the ability to review and make sure that some of these kind of site components are going to be respected. The difference between that site plane review and what's on the books today is that. The the ZBA is the body that it goes to right now, and they have the ability to reject. A proposed district or a proposed building because it has X number of units, whereas this would allow the units by right. And those other items that we're specifically talking about would be reviewed via the site plan review. I hope that answers your question, but.
Yeah.
Jim, can I just clarify something? Hi, sorry, Eleanor, Matt, Aaron Kokinda at the town Wakefield. Um, it's actually the setbacks and that we're following in open space actually fall in line with what that area is already zoned, so general residence. So kind of what you see already in those districts is similar, it is across the board going to be the same for this area here.
So essentially, uh, you know, uh, most of these units are are two or. Footprints are very small and probably can't even. Do additions at this point. So they'd basically have to keep the same footprint. Is that what you're saying?
I think it'd vary on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, okay.
Um, you know, it depends on if someone had a a lot that you had the ability to accommodate the parking. You know, the other thing I I forgot to mention, but is relevant is in terms of the parking concerns. We went to the traffic advisory. They advocated. In order to do this by right, you're still gonna have to have. One and a half parking spaces per unit. So a four unit, you have to fit six off-street parking spaces.
Okay, and then, sorry, may I ask one more question?
Yep.
Um. Can you? I guess, address are there other ways besides doing? A multifamily to match, I guess, the spirit of compliance with this law? And my concern is, um. You know, with the multifamily housing, you're not creating new housing stock that's accessible. You know, for for families who may have kids with disabilities or aging parents, right? And an apartment building is a lot more. Accessible. Um, it's also, um, you know, multifamilies are probably. The most financially risky because you're hitching your financial. Future to three other strangers potentially in that four-unit scenario. Whereas if you go into an apartment. Um, you know, it may have twenty thirty units. It it's got a. You know, developer who's there, they're not leaving Wakefield. So it minimizes this speculative, um. Sort of risk where. You know, developers come in and they see the foray and they knock down a bunch of houses and they. They put up a bunch of multifamilies that people ultimately. Um, won't wanna live in. Um, you know, they're they're more or less temporary. And and I can just say from living on Walnut Street. You know, th- there was mixed single family and two families, and there were lots of periods where those. Two families uh really struggled to search for, you know, renters to live in that that space. So. I'd be interested in in what other solutions you guys could potentially consider that might be more accessible. And and maybe less speculative, I guess.
Yep, so I'll answer this, and unfortunately, we're gonna have to pivot to the next person, but. There, you know, we did look and talk about at a high level an alternative compliance method where we could have picked a smaller zone. But increase the allowable density significantly. So theoretically, in the extreme example, you could have, you know, uh, uh. You know, a block but allow, you know, a fifteen-story building as of right. But that didn't feel appropriate because that's not consistent with the character of the neighborhood. And we didn't feel as if. Taking those those approval processes that are discretionary in nature for larger-scale developments. Sort of the best interest of the town. Basically, we already have an alternative compliance met pathway or zoning pathway where developers could come in. Propose something and propose to get a special permit via the mixed-use zoning that we already have and. Not without lots of controversy as other people can understand from other previous projects, but. We felt as if that going from uh as of right, two families to four. Was, and I know some members may disagree, but we felt that's a, you know, a gentler version of an increase in density. Than trying to come up with. Uh, a specific number of, a small, specific number of sites where we'd have something that'd be much larger. As of right, which really takes away some of our ability to review it as a town.
Oops, thank you for your help, Jim. You've you've worked really hard on this, I know.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you for the for the feedback and the thoughtful questions. Um, I'm gonna pivot to uh Glenn.
Hi folks, Glenn Daly, uh, resident at twenty eight Aborn Avenue. So just generally speaking, I'm I'm in favor and support of the the zoning district. I I think it's a good thing to help. You know, provide some additional density uh in the the urban cores along Main Street. Um, in the in the the commuter rail station. A couple of questions, you know, first question is related to parking. Um, so assuming that the town moves forward. With the the plan to add the. Not the minimum compliance method, but the preferred um. Compliance method, which has additional units above the minimum requirements. I think that provides an additional seven hundred and fourteen dwelling units in the area. And at one point five parking spaces per unit. That's one thousand seventy-one additional cars. That's a lot of cars for. A half-mile radius to to absorb for parking. And then, given the the size of some of the lots. Um. Assuming that. Homeowners or developers are aggressive. In. In. In terms of a a density scenario. They try to pursue four units on every single lot. Possible. Um, that means some of these small lots are gonna be very tightly packed and. So the requirement is probably gonna end up looking at something like. Parking at grade. In a small podium structure. With. Two or potentially two and a half stories of living spaces above. The parking cars, the parked cars below. And so I'm just thinking. Architecturally. Is is the committee and the working group? In in the planning board envisioning? You know, what that might look like in terms of a an urban fabric or a neighborhood fabric and. Is the town. Amenable to that?
I think so. One, thank you for for the thoughtful feedback and the and the question related to the parking. You know, I think. As everyone understands that. The seven hundred unit count that we're talking about, that would be if you took every unit and every parcel and you went up to the maximum as of right. I don't think that's realistic. It's gonna be some component of it.
Yeah.
How much? I'm not gonna pretend to know, right? You know. It all depends on. People who want to. Sell their homes, developer interest, interest rates, et cetera, et cetera. With regards to the parking. You know, we we did think about that pretty hard. I I'm I'm a working group, and that's why we we thought about, and we were originally gonna, you know. Originally said, we have the one and a half that matches the existing zoning in Wakefield in general. We thought, there was a thought that it might be appropriate to lower that. To one point two five or one. In order to, you know, try to alleviate additional cars coming into that urban core, for, you know, suburban core. Uh, of of Wakefield, the Village Center. What we heard was pretty definitive from the traffic advisory committee is that they they thought that was not going to be effective on the basis that. They were. Very worried about. On-street parking. And. They were worried that if you only had one parking spot per unit. That it would result in more cars on the street, which was their priority to try to avoid. Uh, on the basis that that, you know, there's already some issues around this commuter rail station in regards to cars and. Then being stored on the street, especially during snow emergencies. So. I hear you, and I think some of your concerns are totally valid. Um. I think that the traffic advisory committee had a pretty definitive. Direction to the working group, which we took there, um, at least at this time. We have to go and take that feedback from traffic advisor and bring it back to the working group, but my 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 strong lean is that it's gonna, we're gonna accept their. Recommendation.
I'm just wondering, there are other other metrics to consider for parking, uh. Sometimes. Towns will want one parking space per bedroom, or developers will try to get one per parking space per bedroom. So let's say you had. You know. Four one-bedroom units because the lot was small. But at. One point five units, one point five spaces per unit, that would be. Six parking spaces. Whereas comparatively, like if it's one parking space per bedroom. It would only be four parking spaces. Now, I'm not sure if that's a. You know, without speaking to a traffic engineer or or parking engineer, is that? A realistic, you know, metric? Or is it not enough? And just to play devil's advocate. Sometimes the one point five parking ratio. Is still, parking is still tight, so it's it's kind of. You know, it's. The chicken or the egg, but.
Yeah.
It's a it's a tough balance.
Uh, you know, honestly, we could probably spend the whole night debating the merits of what the right metric is for parking. I I've seen studies indicating that. You know, for the this type of community that what's actually used, quote-unquote, is. Uh, like closer to like three-quarter units parking spaces per unit, but. Realistically, are people amenable to doing that? Because any time that there's a shortage of parking in a in a concentrated area, people are unhappy. So, you know, there's a push and a pull on that, and so I think that we've tried to come up with where we think is the right number. I hear you what you're saying, and I don't think it's without merit. I think it's just. Parking's really tricky, as you know.
So just one last comment. I think, you know, Michael McLean made a good point earlier about considering the other. Commuter rail stations, Greenwood and Melrose Highlands, and has the group thought about doing a a hybrid plan where. Some of the density is located around Wakefield Station, and then some of it's located also around Greenwood, kind of breaking it up. So it's more like a. The density is kind of spread out over that that linear neighborhood stretch between Wakefield Station. Greenwood Station and Melrose Highlands. That way, it's kind of. It's not all anchored around, you know, the downtown district.
Yeah, so so just for for people to understand, this is the other district that we considered around Greenwood. Uh, we thought. From a policy perspective, it'd be better to cite it on the western side of the railroad tracks. When we looked at it, we found that the lots, as mentioned earlier, were were too big, and we got down to like eleven. Units per acre, which was less than the fifteen. If uh based on the analysis that we did. As the working group, when we looked at it, we thought, okay, if we drew the. The the size of the district around Wakefield Junction, we thought. Made sense. And wasn't gonna be so far out from a minimum to get to the minimum that we thought that that was the 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 easiest pathway to compliance. I think from some of the feedback through this public forum process we've heard is that folks are asking us to evaluate alternative options. So specifically, if you look at this map, there's some lots that Councilor McLean mentioned. That are farther to the east of, you know, kind of on the border of this this map, maybe a little farther east even. And so that. Town staff is looking at that right now and gonna be presenting some of those alternatives to the working group, and then we're gonna be making it um. A recommendation based on this feedback and what the working group's done to date and the evaluations that we've been been going through.
Yeah, I think the 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 half the half-mile radius. That's that's around Wakefield Station and the downtown core. It does feel like it clips into some of the some neighborhoods that are primarily single-family. Um, there's a lot of, there's a lot of two families and 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 three families mixed in in that that downtown core, but. I think the the outer ring of the of the half-mile circle, it does kind of clip into some single-family neighborhoods that. Where it might be a little incongruous.
So, uh, you know, Glenn, I I appreciate the feedback and, um, uh, you know, we could, I just keep going, but. Um, I think I'm gonna have to move on to to uh other people who are raising their hand as well, but thank you for the feedback and taking the time.
No problem.
Uh, the next person I see is uh Brian McGrath.
Hi Jim, good evening. Uh, thank you to the working group, what what work you guys have done on this and the time that you've spent. You've done a great job getting it to where it is, so I commend you for that. Um, I just had a question.
Brian, um, can you just state your uh your.
Oh, I'm sorry, I I apologize. Uh, Brian McGrath, eighty-one Outlook Road. Thank you, Jim. Um, I just had a question on the parking. It when the when the state. Uh, um. Mandates that these have to be by right. Do they allow you to put density restrictions and parking restrictions on the on the on the projects?
They do allow you to uh parking, um, in terms of density. Uh, they do allow minimum lot size and maximums, uh, so. Not specifically, but by, you know, by the fact that you're requiring a minimum density and you're allowing us maximum units. You know, you can infer.
That's interesting to me because it seems that. Communities can almost circumvent the law by putting, um, you know, for example, parking requirements that you just can't meet. So, you you know, you can do it by right, but you can't pocket. So guess what? You can't do it.
Um, I think that I think that that's something that the state is is aware of, that some communities that are, I'll say, acting in bad faith may try to do. And so, and Aaron, I'll defer to you. I know you've been in contact with the state. Um, but I believe that they they there is a, I'll call a sniff test that they're they do when you're trying to pass zoning with them.
Yeah, I mean, Brian, that's a a point, uh, going off what Jim said, that the state has said from the get-go. Um, that they're gonna be very mindful of that when they're looking at these compliance models, and the compliance model is a tool I've been using. And the compliance model is a tool I've been using to kind of plug away, um, with GIS data to with these dimensional regulations. Parking height, um, setbacks and all that to see if we can meet it. Um, but I do think that there are some times where some of the dimensional regulations may not make. A certain thing possible, um, which occurs now. So, um, in some instances, so. Uh, but yeah, the state, uh, once you send, we'll have a pre-approval meeting, they will give, you know, go through all that with you.
So is there is there is a working group talking about potentially modifying our zoning bylaw parking requirements? For this district and for these, um, uses? Because the way our bylaw is written now on the parking, you're not gonna be able to do it. Um, we have setback requirements, space sizes, driveway widths. And if you're talking some of these lots, like a four thousand minimum square foot lot, it's gonna be very difficult to get. The number of parking spaces that you're talking about onto those lots. Is that something that's being looked at or discussed? Potentially have, you know, special relief, um, or, um, a different parking, um. Section of the bylaw for these, for this, uh, district?
So we've been are, you know, I've been in, um, discussion with, uh, Bill Renaud, our traffic engineer, who's been working with his team to put. Um, certain scenarios, um, together for us. Specifically to parking and what these buildings may look like and what can and can't work. So those are what we're looking at when it comes to relief. It was, um. Brought to my attention by the state that, and this was all through a meeting, that potentially you. People could go for relief if they needed it, but that does not fall under this kind of mandate that they're putting right now. So.
Cause that would be a variance, right? So they would say it's not by right.
Technically, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I would advocate to look at that because I think, uh, Mr. Daly made a good point. That in order to, uh, comply with what we have on the books now, that people do the podium-type building. And you're gonna end up with, you know, in in residential neighborhoods by right, you're gonna end up with parking underneath the building. With multiple cars and then living above, which I don't think is probably the character you're looking for in the district that you're talking about.
We do have the height requirement, Brian, so I don't know how that would play into all that as well. That might restrict that.
They can do, they'll be able to do it if they flat roof it. So you'll get you'll get a three-story building that will be under three, you will be under thirty-five feet in height. That's that's the requirement in this in this district under the bio. I mean, I I assume you're gonna have the same height. Um, if you're doing the same open area. So it, you know, our height. Uh, requirement is by the is basically the peak of the building. So, you know, if you have a an A-frame house, it's the peak of the house, but if you flat roof it, you can circumvent it. So, um, so you could have a three-story building that would meet the thirty-five-foot height requirement with a flat roof. So you could have parking below with two, two, I think Mr. Daly mentioned it, you could have two, two floors of living above that.
I won't speak for Jim, but definitely something we'll, uh, look into as we write this and, um.
Yeah, I think it would just be a good idea to to potentially, um, provide parking relief. So people don't, you know, have to circumvent it or or look to do that to comply with the parking.
Yep, I, you know, Brian, I think it's, it's something that we've been going back and forth on a lot. And you you mentioned it, we we have had some conversations with Bill Renaud in terms of how he could do it. And some of the questions in terms of what type of parking and what constitutes an off-street space. Vis a vis, some of those, you know, parking lot dimensional requirements you're talking, you know, you referenced, that's something that's inactive. We're not a hundred percent sure how we're gonna try to make it more realistic, candidly. You know, we're still trying to get to the end. We just got the feedback from the traffic advisory group relatively recently that the. We thought we might get around that by going down in terms of the minimum number of lot, uh, parking spaces off-street. Um, we heard pretty definitively from the traffic advisor, they would not advise that. So now we're trying to figure out how to accommodate the physical. You know, how do you actually fit everything in in a site with the required setbacks, open space? The actual building and then the number of parking spaces we're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, so, you know, just some ideas, allow tandem parking in this district. Not have the parking spaces count towards, uh, go against open area, have them count as open area. Where right now they don't, um, so there's some ways to do it, but, um. I think some thought needs to go into that, which I'm sure you what you've thought about everything else. I'm sure you'll think about and work through that, uh, also. You've done a great job.
Thank you. Appreciate the feedback. Um, I see there's another raised hand. Before we go to anyone who's already spoken, does anyone else want to speak for the first time? Okay, and, uh, Mr. Chair, I'm a little bit over in terms of our a lot of time, I believe, but are you okay with having one more comment and then we'll move on in the meeting?
Oh, for sure. So.
Okay. So in that case, I see, uh, Glenn re-raised his hand. Um, so. Uh, unless anyone else raises their hand right now, uh, after Glenn's done, we'll let close this this public forum.
Yeah.
So, thank you for letting me speak. I'll I'll be very, very brief. I just wanted to recap in that. Mr. McGrae was making making, doing a very good job of clarifying the point that I was making in terms of. The impact that parking will have on the type of structures that. Will be proposed by developers in some of these neighborhoods. So it's really worthwhile considering. You know, is a a single-family neighborhood that's populated with, you know, gable roofs and hip roofs, is it? Gonna be frowned upon having a three-story flat roof, you know, four-unit apartment building mixed in. Now, in some in some neighborhoods, if there's. Six or eight lots that are redeveloped simultaneously and it kind of creates a new character for that street and that neighborhood, that could work well. But just, it's something to be aware of. Thank you.
Okay, and I saw one hand, uh, raised right as we, um. Glenn was getting ready to speak. If Mr. Chair, if you're amenable to it, I'd like to take, uh, I think it's Judy Green.
Yeah, of course. Yeah. Would love to hear.
Uh, Judy?
Hi, Judy Green, fourteen Maple Ave. Um, sorry, my laptop froze. I didn't get my hand off fast enough. I just had a quick, um, comment about Greenwood. You mentioned, um, the proposed area that you had looked at was along Greenwood Street. Um, and there's been a lot of comment that there are larger lots down there. There are a couple of areas where they are larger, but. If you, um, do a map overlay with the topography and the wetland mapping, you'll see why one side is a tremendous amount of ledge. Um, as you head past Spring Street, it's, um, steeper ledge. And there are also several streams, wetlands, there's a large flood plain, um, on the lower end, heading into Melrose. And the streams and wetlands start at the beginning of Greenwood Street at Yule School. There's actually a wetland and a stream. In the front of the school. So I think once you add blasting possibility and encroachment into the wetlands. That's gonna, this, a tremendous amount of flooding that people experience down there as it is. And I think opening this area up is going to really be, um, catastrophic for that area. And there's also no on-street parking al- along the length of Greenwood Street until you get into Melrose. So that's another consideration, but I think especially the encroachment into the wetlands, there's really no room for flood storage as it is. And it also sets up, um, possible dispute between conservation trying to permit. And permitting of this overlay district. And I will tell you from experience, the wetlands are not gonna win that battle, and that's not fear to the people in this neighborhood. I don't know if there's been outreach to these neighborhoods, but I would hope you try to solicit some feedback. Because I don't, I I don't see how it's gonna work. It, the couldn't, the wetlands down there, the streams all connect further down. So it's not gonna be just that strip that'll be affected. It's the surrounding areas that are already really impacted by the flooding.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Thank you for that.
Board, Board Member Matt, uh, Lowry has his hand raised. Yeah, Matt.
Yeah, uh, thanks, Matt Lowry, you know, the planning board and on the working group. And I was, uh, one of the people that really pushed this idea of. Centering this district more towards downtown. And away from the new Rose Station. And as we've been talking here about the parking issues. And density and people trying to get around. That's why I've been pushing to to bring this more downtown. So we have the density in the areas where we have businesses, so people don't have to go. It it's our hope that even by lowering the parking ratio downtown. That you have more rental units than, as referred, people that want to commute back and forth to Boston. That do not actually want to have a car, but able to walk. To the bus, to the community rail station, to a store, to a restaurant. And that's why I'm really still even more in favor of this. Concept of downtown, where people are already where they want to be, the services are already there. The, having another district in Greenwood. You're not gonna have these services, so therefore people are gonna have to get in the car, they're gonna have to drive. And we already know that Wakefield is has a massive parking issue downtown. So these people aren't gonna drive to downtown. They're gonna drive to Lenfield, they're gonna drive to. Stone, they're gonna try to other places where they can, you know, a place to park. So it is almost gonna be kind of productive to have this type of density. In Greenwood, where you don't have the services and you don't have the opportunity to have the stores. And the resources that people are using. So again, I'm still in favor of centralizing this more towards our downtown. Having. Residents there to to utilize the stores and make it more vibrant. So I know we have a lot of, we talked a lot about parking and everyone's saying we need more parking. Well, if you, if we move this district away from downtown, we'll definitely have to more have more parking. And again. People are gonna drive not to downtown, they're gonna drive out of it. And that's gonna basically reduce the business footprint. So again, as we continue these discussions, I think that is something that really needs to be looked at.
Thank you. Uh, that's also helpful. Um, uh. Yep, uh, Bill. Any any comments from from you, um, or any other comments from anyone else on the call?
No, Theo, thanks for the, um, thanks for all the work again to the working group and. Um, as we've stated many, many times, it's so important to have public participation. I mean, our goal with all this is to be prepared for town meeting. So if we can discuss this, get to a place where. Um, the presentation of town meeting is really, um, on point. I think we can, we can move forward. It's, there's a lot to still work out. And then, again, appreciate all the input. Thanks.
Very, very well said. And, um, yeah, I, I think, uh. Jim and I and and everyone else, um, really appreciate everyone taking the time tonight, um. Uh, for this discussion and, uh, for the the continued input as we move forward. So thank you. Um, with that, let's, uh, let's call this, uh, item three to a close, um, our public discussion. And, uh, we will move ahead, uh, to the fourth item on our agenda. Um, uh, one ninety-seven Prospect Street Clyde Court, um. And I'm going to, uh, invite, uh. I think Aaron and Matt to, uh, take the lead with this while I, um. Uh, quiet my dog.
So sorry, I have my family now joining us too. I guess they want to present on Clyde Court as well. Um, I just am gonna do a quick, uh, introduction. So this is, um. For the planning board members that aren't familiar with this, this is a subdivision that was brought in front of the board, uh, a few years back now. Um, and we have the attorney here representing the the developer and the property on Attorney McGrae. And really, I'm just gonna hand it over to him and kind of give you an update of where this project stands, um, as well as the few things that are on the agenda. So. Uh, Matt, I don't know, you were here. This was prior to me even starting, so this is prior to twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, um. And so, uh, Matt, you may be able to speak a little bit more about this, but it's a three-lot subdivision off Prospect Street.
Yeah, I I believe we're, we, the applicant is, um. Not present their their close-up documents and have the board sign off on it. Uh, I do know there's one other ongoing issue that, uh, we're gonna be discussing, but I think, uh, Brian McGrae. Can discuss where they want to move forward.
Drew, I'm happy to do that if it's okay with you, um, Matt. I know Theo has stepped out, so I'm gonna defer to you.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you. For the record, Attorney Brian McGrae. Uh, here on behalf of, uh, the developer of this site, uh, which is, uh, one oh seven Prospect LLC, John Cullen. Uh, is the principal of that entity, and John is with us here tonight. John's done a number of developments in in Wakefield. Um, as it's been mentioned, this is, uh, Clyde Court off of Prospect Street, the former address of one oh seven Prospect Street. Uh, it's a small three-lot subdivision. Um, it's, um, it's come out very well. Um, it's, it's complete, um, at this point, and, um, as Matt had said, we're 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 here for, uh, a a few reasons. Um, one, um, we submitted our as-built plans and our street acceptance plans and all of the other documents that were required, the, um. Uh, per year decision, um, in order to, uh, uh, request to close out the subdivision and have our surety released. The current surety on the subdivision is the for, in the form of a tri-party agreement. Um, with, uh, my client, your board, and Wakefield Corporate Bank. And the total on that is sixty-nine thousand and change, so we'll say approximately seventy thousand dollars, uh, to secure the balance of the work. So, um, so our goal is is to, uh, get the subdivision closed out, get your board sign off. And to have the surety released. Um, two of the three houses have been sold. The third is under agreement to sell this month. Um, so it's very important for my client to be able to do that. Um, so that's kind of topic number one. Um, the the closeout, topic number two is the surety. And topic number three. Uh, relates to, um, a condition on the subdivision, uh, that involved, um. Um, some arborvitae's being planted on, um, the perimeter of one of the lots, um, that was done. Um, and, um, those failed to take because, um, it was, it was determined afterwards that. They died, um, rather abruptly, uh, because, uh, they weren't appropriate, uh, for the, um, conditions or the environment. That they were planted in, the 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 where they're located, um, it doesn't get enough sun. So, um, the butter to that property, Anita Lofflin is on tonight, um, and we've had, um, Erin and I and my client. And a couple of the planning board members, uh, Mr. Spalding, Mr. Lowry, we've met at the property to to look at the situation. Um, and to try to come up with some alternatives, um, to the arborvitae's. And I think we have a a potential solution to that that would. Would be involved in the closeout of the of the subdivision. So if I can take them, I'll I'll take those three things in order, if I may. Uh, on the closeout documents that we provided, uh, the as-builts, um, to get a final sign off on the subdivision. Uh, we also sent those to the town engineer's office. Uh, Bill Renaud and Tim Wilson have had an opportunity to review those. I spoke to them in detail. Um, and I was hoping that they could make a recommendation, um, to close out, uh, the subdivision. They can't at this point. They see some issues on this, on the, um, as-built that they need more information on. Uh, more survey work, more more information for them to be able to render a decision. Uh, to make a recommendation, uh, to your board. So, uh, based on that, in our working relationship with them through this project, we're not looking to get a closeout or sign off or release. Tonight, uh, for the whole subdivision, because you you do not have a recommendation from them in that regard. Um, so we will be back at a later date on that when we get some things resolved with them and we can keep you informed, uh, in that regard. So issue number two, uh.
Excuse me, Attorney Bill?
Yeah.
Um, what were the issues that they were specifically looking at?
They wanted more detail, Matt, on the location of a wall, as it impacts the right-of-way. Um, they wanted, uh, more detail on the rain garden. Um, they think the rain garden might have to be raised up a little bit. Um, they they questioned whether the way it's built has enough separation from the groundwater, from the design. Um, and those are the two main things that they want more detail on.
All right, um, are bounds still need to be set at the site? I didn't see those on the plans.
I'm sorry, Matt.
Are monuments still to be set? I know on the acceptance plan, there's a little note saying monuments to be set, but they aren't set yet.
Yeah, that might be another. Yeah, that might be another thing because Bill, you know, I talked to Bill quickly. Those are kind of the two things. He said there were some other items. He's going to send me a list.
Okay.
But I'm happy to point that out to him too, if that, if you notice that.
Yeah, but it definitely needs to be done.
Okay, yeah. So there might be, you know, based on what Bill finds, there might be some more work that we need to do. And that's why he is not, uh, inclined to recommend a, recommend a reduction in surety. And we're fine with that. Uh, we recognize that and John's, you know, had nothing but a work relationship with them. So we'll, we'll, we'll do what we need to do to get things resolved with them. Um, so, um, some of that stuff might have to wait till the spring depending on what it is. So we'll keep you informed as we go, uh, on that when we, we get more information. So that's where we stand on the, on the, um, on the surety release. Um, the second aspect of that is we are going to ask you to allow, um, the, uh, the, uh, transfer or what the substitute, a substitute surety from the tri-party agreement. Uh, in the form of a passbook agreement where, uh, Mr. Cullen will be able to put up a bank account as, yeah, a surety in the same amount as a tri-party agreement in order to get the bank, Wakefield Cooperative Bank, released from the tri-party agreement. Um, because the way it works now is our tri-party agreement, which, um, secures your board for the seventy thousand dollars is collateralized by the final lot. So Wakefield Cooperative Bank cannot release that lot right now until they're released from the surety. Um, since you can't release us from the surety, uh, the easiest thing to do is to substitute that tri-party agreement with a passbook agreement. So in essence, my client will put up a cash account. And, and that passbook agreement would now release the bank, but you would be in, in probably in a better position because you would have a passbook in the town's possession with the money versus having to collect it from a bank. Um, so what, what I've done is I anticipated that this would be a subject that would come up tonight if we weren't able to close, get rid of the surety altogether. So I drafted a, um, a, um, passbook agreement, which I provided a copy to your board and to Erin earlier, and I also sent it to town council, Tom Mullin. And Tom has made a couple of minor changes to it, but he's, uh, he's in agreement that that's a, a good form of surety and, and acceptable to him. So I would request that you would, um, if John chooses to, because, uh, you know, we don't know what's going to happen with that lot at this point, but if he chooses to, that he could work with uh, Erin, town council and your chair to, uh, implement the substitute surety.
Right. I, I would be in favor of that. I, I know we should get that. So I, I also do want to point out that the subdivision looks, looks great. It did come out very nice. I think it's a asset up there. So we work on that. So.
Thank you, Matt.
Um, I think that would be One point of clarification, if we do this pass through agreement, um, and I haven't gone through the full, full documentation, but what's the mechanism for getting that, that money released back to, um, the John and team?
Yeah. So it's a, it's actually, I, I, you probably can't understand me. It's, um, um, it's a passbook agreement. So basically it's a, it will be a passbook like a savings account book and it's in the, in the name on the count, on the account, uh, Jim, it's the town of Wakefield. So that book will be held by the town treasurer or town council. So you would have possession of the money.
So in lieu of, in lieu of having an escrow account that's held by a third party, now we're just being, we're just holding it directly as a town.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's very, it's very, you really can't get much more secure than that. So then what, if the work isn't done uh, to your satisfaction, then you can, you just, you have, already have the money. If it is done, then you would just release that passbook back to us. Once it's completed. We've done them before on other subdivisions, Matt. You're probably familiar with these.
Yeah.
So if that's acceptable before we, uh, close out tonight, we, we would like a vote authorizing that. And, and again, we would like that option. Uh, John might look at this in the next couple of days and decide just to leave it in place with the bank. Either, either way, the, the board is secure. So we would just like you to, uh, vote to authorize that, um, if we decide to pursue it and to work with Erin and the chair and town council to get that implemented.
Okay.
So, and then the, the, the third thing, um, and this kind of goes with the closeout because, you know, it would be deal, deal with the kind of a modification of the decision is the arbovite. Um, and, um, I'm going to, um, share my plan if I can, Erin, or Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Sorry, I'm doing the wrong thing.
And Brian, while, while Theo's setting up the sharing, so just to reiterate what Matt said, uh, really appreciate this work, Mr. Cullen. It's just, it's really good to see this work. And we were so concerned at the beginning with the trees and the rain garden and the a lot of input again from the neighbors. So I, I really appreciate the work that's gone into this project. It's, it looks really good. And I don't know if you noticed going by yesterday, but that rain garden was pretty deep with water. It was doing its job. And it looks like today it's all gone. So it worked well.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, yeah, you're, you should be all set, Brian.
Okay. Okay. So this is the, um, this is the area that, uh, let me try to blow this up a little bit. Hang on a second.
Yeah, closure tools.
Oh, thank you. Is that better folks?
Yeah. Yeah.
Whoops. Hold on, I want you there for a minute. Here we go. Is that okay?
I think so.
Okay. So, um, this is, this is, um, I, to orient you the best I can. Um, this is the backside of C2. So our roadway is up here. And this is the backside of lot C2. And, um, this is Anita Loughlin's property, which abouts it. And your, your decision had a condition that there would be arbovites planted on C2 right along the property line. Right? Kind of where this, where this area is of my cursor going back and forth. And that was done, as I mentioned, in compliance. And there's a restrictive covenant that requires the, uh, the homeowners association and the lots to maintain those. Uh, but as Anita pointed out, um, they didn't last very long. They, they died. Um, and it was a pretty wet summer, um, and we all noticed it. So um, she brought that to everyone's attention and, and I think contacted Erin and wanted resolution is, you know, and I don't blame her because who wants to look at, uh, you know, ten dead arbovites in your backyard? So, um, Erin set up a meeting that we could go up and look at it and we talked about it in, um, and what was discussed was, um, well, maybe these aren't the right plants for this spot. So maybe we can substitute something that would be better. So what we did is, uh, my client, John Cullen, uh, hired, uh, James Emanuel, the licensed landscape architect. Um, uh, who, who dealt with the red maple trees on the front of the lot on Prospect, which came in beautiful. You might recall at the beginning of this subdivision, those red, there were three red maples on Prospect that were in terrible shape. And James Emanuel evaluated them and said they're dying anyways. Uh, but the board at the time said, those are just so valuable to the neighborhood. We want the red maples. And, and so, um, um, Matt, I think it was one of your conditions that the, that area was very protected during construction. It was roped off. So the ground won't become impacted. And, and then, uh, pursuant to James' guidance, three new red maples were planted there and they came in beautiful. They look great this year. Uh, and they're thriving. So we thought it'd be a good idea to have James come out and look at the situation on this lot line where the arbovite were planted. And he did come out, he met with, um, Anita, myself, John, and I think Erin was at that meeting. And he pointed out to all of us that in his professional opinion, we could plant arbovite all day, every day there, and they were just going to continue to die. Uh, because it wasn't enough sunlight that would get through. Um, so what he suggested is, is that, um, in, is that we substitute and we talked about the area of the property line. And it was suggested, and I think this is acceptable to Anita, but she can certainly speak, uh, for herself. She's on here, uh, tonight on the Zoom. Um, that those would be substitute with, uh, two vib- um, viburnum, um, in this area and then by, with one red maple right on the property line. Uh, and this just points out an existing Norway tree. Jim pointed that out and he mentioned that these are very invasive trees and they were creating problems with the arbovite. And, and he thought that, um, what he suggested here, these types of plants, um, and there's only three of them, uh, one little tree and then a couple of verbitum, um, verbinum, I'm sorry, um, would thrive and would do very well in this area and would, um, compete very well with the Norway and not be wiped out by them. So I think what the goal would be, and this would be part of the closeout of the subdivision that would need, we'd need to do modification and get that in place. Um, but we want to make sure that we can start that process, uh, would be to substitute the arbovite for these plants and, and change the documents to that effect and, and probably just do a minor modification to the decision because of the decision call for arbovite just to make sure everything is consistent going forward. So happy to, uh, hear comment or anything on that, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I, um, the, so the replacement plantings would occur in the same spot as the
Yeah, generally. Yeah. That's where the, the arbovite were right on this property line. Yeah, right. They, they went, they went right in here.
Okay. Sort of in that little area between
Yeah, right.
The blue, the blue line, the fence.
Not that far back. They're real, they're on, they're on, they're on lot C2, but not way back. They're kind of like right on the lot line. That's why he's putting the tree on the lot line and he's putting these, or verbinum very close to the lot line.
Okay. All right. So, and, uh,
Theo, if I may.
Yeah.
So when, when this subdivision came forward, um, one of the concerns in the neighborhood to view. And again, this came up with the, with the, the developer and the developer for some screening there. And, and what was decided between the two of them was to put some arbovites up. Unfortunately, the new homeowner then went and put, or the developer, I'm not sure who went and put a seven foot tall fence up right, right against them. So I understand, yes, they, they aren't doing well because of a condition that was made by the homeowner by putting a fence up thus blocking the, um, the sun to them. So now, this is kind of a, a self-reused problem because we, it was proposed to put our varieties up, developer knew that's what was going to happen, but then the fence was then put up right against it, which basically doomed them. So we're, we're now here trying to, you know, get a resolution to this. So I just wanted to point out that, um, as Attorney McBell points out, yes, the conditions weren't right, but it's a man-made condition that basically doomed these arbovites.
Okay.
So one of my concerns would be if these plants are put up and the fence is pushed closer to them, that again, they're, they're doomed by, you know, man-made conditions.
Um, that the, the, do we, we feel confident that the, the alternative proposals will thrive despite the, the fence?
Yeah. So, um, I mean, I, I, I do want to point out, I, I disagree on one point, Matt, because we were there with, with Jim Emanuel. And, and his, his reasoning for the fact that the, uh, the viti didn't survive was because of the Norway maple trees. Because they have a, a big canopy and they just, in, in, in they, in their root systems are all in the ground. Um, they're just in a very aggressive tree and, and, and he really gave us a, you know, we were there for a while. He gave us all a dissertation on Norway maples. And that's why if you have Norway maples near your yard, you can't grow grass. Because the roots go under your lawn and they just take all the nutrients. So he said it just, it, it was more the Norway na- maples that caused the problems with the arbovites. And that's why he selected Theo, these three, these two different types of plants, because he said they can, they will compete and do very well with Norway maples. Um, the nutrients that they need are not the same as the Norway maples. That's why, that's why John hired him because he's an expert and, and that's what he suggested would, would go there.
Can I make a comment?
Uh, yes, uh, Ms. Loughlin.
So I wa- I was there and I do appreciate the, the work that, um, Brian and John, and, uh, I really do appreciate the planning board, uh, showing up. So, um, he did say, yeah, there's, there's trees that will survive um, in the shade with the Norway maple, but not to contradict you, the, there was shade, the shade, shade caused by the fence was one of his issues as well as it was a shady area, um, of my yard. And he did say, just to, um, support what Brian said, that these, these plantings are not evergreens, which don't survive long, shade their deciduous trees. And they should be able to survive better than not. Um, I do have a concern what happens in the future. If they don't die, if they, if they die, um, and then the, um, homeowners association says, well, they died. Let's move the fence and, or do something different. And it, it, um, you know, these were dead for three and a half years, um, before anybody noticed them so far. So what would happen, you know, in the future if this doesn't take? And whatever. So I want to say, support what Brian said. He said, he, he did confirm that he thought, you know, as best as his knowledge would be that these plantings would survive. Um, they're going to be, I guess, a little bit apart from the fence, um, but yeah, in that gen- general area before.
Yeah. So, but the, um, thank, thank you, Ms. Lough- Loughlin. The, the point is, I think, well taken from Matt too, that the fence also creates a a constraint, right?
Yeah. I mean, you know, I'll acknowledge that. I mean, you know, i- 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 if Anita heard that from him, then I stand to be corrected. So, uh, I'm fine with that. But, you know, that is what it is. You know, I, I think it's important to note that, you know, the, the, there's no, it's not like there was a, there's like a buffer area of like a, a, an easement or you can't do anything in here. The only thing that the decision said and the restriction says is, is that there's going to be, there were going to be arbovites planted along the property line on C2. So it didn't say, you know, five feet back or, you know, so, you know, th- th- there's not a restriction in that regard. Um, as far as, um, uh, to answer Anita's question, so what, you know, what we, what, what we're going to, uh, do is, um, substitute these for the arbovites. And then there's a, there's, there is a covenant that says if these plants die, the homeowners association has to replace them. Um, if they don't, then the town can replace them and they can charge the homeowners association. So that's what the covenant is. So we've got some drafting and, 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 you know, to, to kind of do the modification and the substitute of this that, that has to be done as part of the closeout. So I can, let me share that, um, I think that might be helpful if I can. Yeah, when we, Mr. Chair, it's going to take me a second, but I think this is important. I think it'll be helpful. Just had to log on my computer to switch it over.
And, um, Matt and Bill, I, I appreciate your, your history and familiarity with, with all of this for, for sure.
Yeah. And this is gonna, this is gonna help their memory because it goes back a while, as Matt said. Yeah. There's a lot of time and effort went into this when it was was that? What is that? Okay. Actually, patience, I said it, bring it all off my other computer. Okay. I think this is important because I want to show you, um, how these. This is a subdivision plan. And this is, so this kind of gives, disorients you a little bit better. This is the street coming in. And this is the, this is the back of the subject property, uh, right here. So this is where you can see it had the proposed abrevieties, five to six feet apart along the property line. So that's where that was specked. And then, um, as far as Anita's question on, you know, the maintenance, et cetera. Uh, the planning board thought about that and. It dealt with it. With this. So there's a restrictive, there's a restrictive covenant on the subdivision, um, and this is, um. This is, um, for not only, uh, this is the, for the red sunset, sunset maples in the front on Prospect in the abreviate. And what it says, it's an agreement, it's a restriction, it runs with the land for the benefit of the town. Um, and as far as the, it says number three, the three sugar maple trees along Prospect Street must be removed. Yeah, because of the deteriorating condition, because if you remember, we did a tree report with Jim Emanuel. Um, and as a condition of approval of, of the plan, they are being replaced with three ace of rubber sunset. Um, three and a half calipers shown on the plan. Also pursuant to the board's decision as a condition of approval. Abrevieties are being installed and maintained five to six feet apart along the property line of lot two and on lot two B, as shown on the plan. These red sunset maples and the abrevieties shall be maintained and or replaced when necessary. As determined in the sole discretion of the board, that being you, in perpetuity. The maintenance and the replacement of the sunset maples and abrevieties and any in all costs associated there, which shall be the joint. And several responsibility of the owners of the subdivision lots on the plan and the homeowners association. So the reason we did that and your board did that was, um, you know, there is a homeowners association, but homeowners associations aren't liquid. You know, if they don't have any money, good luck chasing them, right? So that, that way it put you in a position that if the homeowners association didn't do it, you could go after the lot owners to do it. Um, the lots containing the red sunset maples and abrevieties are subject to re- restriction prohibiting interference. Um, in the maintenance replacement thereof, including but not limited to prohibiting the alteration, the areas of the abrevieties in the ma- um, in the red sunset maples. Now, this is the key. Um, if at any time the lot owners feel to comply. Then the town or its agents shall have the right to enter on the land to do the work appropriate to satisfaction of the board of DPW. And, um, you're entitled to reimbursement from the homeowners association or, um, the lot owners. So furthermore, the developer gives an easement on and over the property shown on the plan to provide access to the, to these red maples. And the abrevieties for purpose of inspection, maintenance and replacement. So there is an obligation pretty strong, um, to deal with this going forward. So our anticipation is this document would be modified to change the abrevieties to what we're proposing. And the decision would be minor, a minor modification reflecting this, because this was pursuant to the decision.
Right, and, and both have to be recorded.
Both will be recorded, yeah.
Okay, um, we don't, we don't have a draft of the amendment.
No, that, as I said, Mr. Chair, that's why, you know, I've got to work this all out, um, you know, I've got to, you know, kind of, um. Pe- piece this all together. And then that would be part of the closeout. So, you, you know, until we're, we're resolved with this, you won't be released to surety.
Okay.
So tonight, you need the planning board and Anita, I know you're still on this call, um. To kind of give you the okay to move forward with the plan that was presented, is that correct, Brian?
Yeah, make, make sure everybody's uh, satisfied with that, and I'm gonna use my best efforts to get that implemented with documentation. If I have issues, we'll come back and talk about it, but I don't think I will.
Okay.
I, I, one other question, um, uh. The, the subdivision plan, Brian, that you showed us did not have the fence as a. Um. A new, like, either, yeah, as being part and parcel to the original approved subdivision, right?
Hmm.
Um, so the, the, like, Matt, right, Matt, yeah, that's helpful, because, right, the fence is new and, uh. Um, a problem, right?
Well, in, in this case, because. You know, it was anticipated the abrevieties would be put there. Uh, I mean, we could have, we all probably knew that's, that would, there'd be fencing around these houses, if people want, probably some, in the backyard, and that. So perhaps the whole, um. You know, going along with the abrevieties is, is not the best idea, but again, this was presented to the board. At the time. You know, we wanted to make sure the abutters were, were fine with it, and that was one of the. Driving factors to get an approval of the subdivision, so I understand why it was done.
Right, okay.
So, you know, moving forward, I don't have, I don't have an issue with, with changing the, the terms of, of the, um, surety. To a passbook, uh, it's gonna keep this thing moving, so the, the brother and the developer can, can keep talking and this can be worked out. I don't think we really need to take any action on that tonight. So, um, I would make a motion to. Move to accept the transfer to our passbook. Surety on this.
I'll second that motion.
All right, um. Any more discussion, uh, or all in favor, um, Jim?
Yes.
All right, uh, Bill?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Uh, and myself, yes, um. Uh, Anita, do you still have your hand up, or do you have another question or comment?
Oh, you're muted.
Yeah.
Uh, so, um, I'm just curious, um, Matthew, Mr. Lowry, um. Um. Uh, the, the, the plan for the abreviate. Was the, is there? Um, you, you, I guess you implied that maybe it wasn't the best idea. But you, um, you're not moving forward to agree with, uh, have it amended. Uh, tonight, or are you waiting to see what, how Brian puts it into the document? Or are you waiting for another time when you could rescind? Um, the. The, the ask for the, for the, with the, uh, the trees or whatever along that would block the view?
No, so, so at this point, since we're not closing this out, um, no decision is needed by the board. Um, you're, you and the developer, I assume that we're gonna have ongoing conversations about this. Ryan needs to work up, uh, proposed language anyways. So at this point, we're, we're not gonna, you know, make any decision on, on, on this point. Because we still have it open, we still have, uh, you know, some skin in the game to make sure this gets done. So, I, I would expect that this will be resolved before we release this subdivision unit. Does, does that help, help you that it, it's, we haven't decided anything on this, we're still, it's still being worked out?
Um, I guess so, as long as, um, the decision can't go the other way, I guess, you know, um, I'll stay tuned.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna, you know, I, I'm gonna start working to try to get that implemented, Anita, that, you know, that's, that's our goal.
Yeah.
That's what we, that's what we discussed, so I'm gonna start working with John to try to do some modification paperwork to, to, that be able to. To present it to the board. I think that's what you're saying, Matt, you want to see something presented to the board in that regard.
Yeah, I think, you know, we need to see the proposed terms, and as long as Anita and, and developer are fine with this, I think the board will be fine with it.
Yeah.
But if, if there's no resolution, then it, it stays that there'll be our providers there that. They may die and they'll have to be continually replaced. Obviously, it's not the best solution for any of us here. We would rather have something that you would like and. And the developers are fine with, and then we can close this up.
And, um, right, the two documents that are recorded are staying recorded, um. You know, um, the only, the only thing that's happening is, uh, releasing the, um. The sure, the, going, going from the tripartite agreement with Wakefield Coop to the passbook, which is a two-party agreement between the town. And, uh, and, uh, Prospect LLC. So, so, right, the town is still fully involved and, uh. And we're, you know, we have the security of the, of the, the surety. So, um, I hope, I hope that is reassuring. All right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, um. All right, so perhaps, uh. Uh. Uh, we'll, we'll see this at the January ninth or, uh, January twenty-third meetings or, or later.
Might be a little bit later, I think, uh, I mean, so a couple of things, so the replacement of, of. The, uh, trees and the, the, you know, back there, replacement of the abreviate with those substitute plants, they're not gonna be able to happen until the spring anyways.
Yeah.
And I think what we're gonna find out, uh, from the town engineer. Is, uh, my preliminary discussions with him today is we're gonna have to do some work in that rain garden. Um, and, you know, John's probably gonna have to maybe take out some plants, raise it up a little bit to get to the elevation. Uh, Bill Renault, uh, Matt, thought it was probably about six to eight inches off. Uh, he didn't think it was a big deal, but i- i- he wants it to, you know, it needs to be in compliance. And, um, so we're probably gonna have to wait for the spring to do that work. We certainly can't do it now, we ruin the, we ruin the rain garden, so.
So he's just looking for preparation of groundwater, basically?
Yes, yeah, yeah, he said it, he said it's about se- we need about seven inches of fill in the middle to make it comply.
All right, okay. Do, do we need a, a vote to authorize Theo to decide this, this passport? Passport agreement, or are we all set with that?
No, that would be great, yeah, you know, if, if we go forward on that, Matt, yeah, that would be great, thank you.
All right, I'd like to amend my, um, my motion to add that Theo has, is authorized to, to sign on behalf of the board.
I'll second that as amended.
All right, um, all in favor, uh, Jim?
Yes.
Uh, Bill?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And myself, yes, um, all right.
So one last thing I wanted to bring up, um, you know, I spoke to, to, uh, John, who's still on the call. We were talking about the rain garden, so this might have to hold off to the spring as well, but as part of the conditions as well of, uh, one oh seven Prospect Street was. Having signage, um, showing what the gar- rain garden does. I believe I sent around to this group, um, some, an idea that he had, but if you find, uh, Attorney McRae and John. It appropriate for us to talk about this more once those changes have been made, uh, for the springtime, because I don't believe maybe go, a sign, being a, putting a sign in now. Um, I just wanted to put that out there, because that is a discussion that has been had, so, um.
Yeah, thank you, Erin, for reminding.
Yeah.
That, that's one other condition, it is, and John has presented kind of a design. Uh, we can wait on that.
Okay.
It just kind of informed people, you know, that what, you know, that it is a rain garden, it's kind of neat, uh, and I think you'll like the sign concept, but we can talk about that. Because that won't go in until the spring also.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, but I just didn't want John to think I didn't forget about that, so we'll make sure we keep it on our radar.
And the other thing is that we, we're gonna talk about on that is, is two rain gardens, one is in someone's backyard. And the other one is prominent on the front of Prospect Street, which really gets a lot of attention and people walking by are kind of very curious what it is.
Yeah.
Um, so I think that was the kind of purpose of that sign. But I don't think it really makes a lot of sense to have a sign in somebody's backyard that nobody can see but them. So, um, so we, we, we're gonna probably look, ask the, ask the board to limit the rain garden signs to just the one where the public can see it.
Could, could I comment on that? Um, just.
Yeah.
My initial thought about signs for the rain garden would be some small demarcation, just so people would know that. You know, that this is a protected area. I, I had not really thought that it would be, you know, that large a sign for this. So one of my concerns would be maintenance and upkeep of this over the years. Do you see a, you know, the sun setting on this? Is this something to be up for five years and taken down? Or is this in perpetuity? Is it, I, I don't know if it's really necessary to have, you know, that large a sign for, for a rain garden.
Yeah, I mean, that's up to you, that's up to your board. Um. That, you know, this is, this is kind of like what we were gonna say on it, to give you an example. To, as Matt, Matt mentioned, to mention it's a protected area and to, and to, it kind of informs what's happening here.
I, I, I guess I would be leaning towards something a little more. A little more discreet, um, just something that points out it's a protected rain garden, protected area.
So really limit it, Matt?
That would be what I would, would think. I don't know what the other board members. Have ideas on this?
We'll do whatever the board wants, so it's up to you.
Yeah, I know, up around Market Basket and Reading, there's a lot of weapons up there, and I, I believe they have some small signs. On posts. But that's more what I was envisioning instead of a larger. Sign like this. Again, that, that's my con- my, my thought, I don't know what anyone else feels about that, just before you go down a little too far on that.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that, um, when we first discussed the signage for this, it was really just rain garden protected area. We, I, I don't remember looking at signs for it, but it was just discussed as something to, so people know not to. Put anything else in there or fill it in or all that. Um, I do like how this is written, it's very educational and really. Um, direct, so I, I do like that. Um, I would like to go on the minimal side and keep the signs very simple.
Yeah, the condition read, here's what your condition read. Just to refresh your memory, it says there should be informational signs posted in the rain garden at all times, so it really is in perpetuity, Matt. Identifying each, uh, rain garden as a protected area and referencing the specific maintenance protocol is required. The type and size of the sign shall be approved by the board prior to installation.
Yeah, so, sounds like, uh.
We can, we can, we can give the board, we'll give the board a couple of different options, because we have to. This was just kind of what we were gonna put on it, but we've got to give you a style of the sign and material and, you know, what it's gonna look like, so. You know, I mean, John, are you here? We can, we can provide a few different options, right?
Yes, we can, absolutely.
We're gonna have to hire a sign company, so they'll do that, they'll give us some ideas that we can present to the board.
So. You know, again, I'm not opposed to this, but I think maybe. Um, having up for a certain amount of time to educate the public on what a rain garden is might be good, but at some point. Uh, it, 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 if, it may be, need to be removed or refreshed and. Perhaps we just have a limited time on this. So we have some, some small markers that say it's a rain, you know, protected area rain garden. And maybe this up to educate the public and when everyone's up to speed on it and a couple of years on it, it, it goes away. That's enough.
Okay. Okay.
Terrific, all right.
Thank you.
Yeah. When we when we get the. I think the the. The final draft or the the final passbook, we'll we'll get it executed. Item. Five is the A and R plan for four sixty-six Water Street.
That's mine also, Mr. Chair.
Yep. Great.
So I submitted two A and R plans on this and and I'll explain why. Because one of them, the the A and R. The A and R plan references that all buildings are gonna be raised. And you have a requirement in your regulations to put tie lines on existing buildings. And and I personally thought that that doesn't make sense when the buildings are gonna be raised, but. We wanted to make sure that we complied, so we we I wanted to provide both options for the planning board. Both are acceptable to us. I just don't think it makes sense to record a plan at the registry, having the lines on it for buildings that are gonna be taken down, but, you know, that's that's the prerogative of the board, so. I'll bring up the one with the tie lines and then we can talk about that if that's okay.
Yeah, I think I think the the tie lines are. What's. What is desired?
So this is the, this is the A and R plan itself. Property is four sixty-six Water Street. And it's pretty straightforward A and R plan. We've got public ways, Montrose Ave and Water Street. This is the zoning line. The general residence in the back, business in the front. The the frontage requirement in the business district is forty feet. And both of these lots meet the frontage requirement on the public way. This lot two is forty-two feet. And the frontage on this has frontage actually on both streets. It has frontage on Water Street of over fifty, and then it has frontage on. On Montrose Ave of sixty-one. So happy to answer any questions again, pretty pretty straightforward A and R plan. So this had the tie lines to the building. I have another version. That just does not have these tie lines, which, you know, I don't know what the preference of the board is.
I mean, the I think our, well, I know our preference of the board is to have the tie lines. Because we want to have distances from all buildings to street shown and measured.
Yeah, if I could just find out something that. I get this a lot actually at work when people say. Don't worry, you don't do a good job surveying over there, you're gonna get ripped down. That's not really what. You know, to do a good job, we're a part of it. I usually find out to people in my office that eventually every building's gonna get ripped down, so. Why should we do anything like that? It's not the point. Regulations state that. It is what it is. All buildings need to have ties, so. That's why they're on it. It doesn't really matter if they're gonna be ripped down. I can show you. Plans that I've done, it really shows buildings to be removed when they're still there, so. Regulations should be met. The plan should leave them.
We're fine with that, so that's why. I just didn't know what the preference of the board would be and 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 what you said makes sense, Matt, so that's fine, so, you know, this plan. I won't even show the other plan. It's the same plan, and it just doesn't have those tie lines.
Yeah, if you want to show the building, rip the buildings down and submit the plan with no buildings, but, you know. We're there. Show the ties and.
Given given our earlier discussion, what what are the buildings, just for context?
This is, this building is a a single-family dwelling.
Okay.
Chair, and this is just a barn.
All right. Yeah. Got it. Single-family house on a seventeen thousand square foot lot.
Yeah, which, by the way, is interesting. It's non-conforming, because you can't have a single-family house in a business district. Which is amazing. You can have a two-family house in a business district under a bylaw, but not a single-family house.
Right, right. All right. Wait. Coefficient of regularity?
Yes, right at the bottom, so.
What is that? One point oh seven, then, okay. All right. All right, greater than sixty-five, so that's good. All right. Any other comments from members of the board? Okay.
I don't have really. I had some comments and. Talked to you about them.
Sorry, I couldn't really hear.
Yeah, you're hard to hear, Matt.
I'm sorry, I I had a couple of earlier. Concerns and I brought this up with Aaron. We can address. I don't have an issue with this.
Yeah, thank you for doing, thank you for doing that, Matt. Appreciate it.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
I'll make a motion to endorse. It's unfortunate, I can't read it, but.
Hold on, Matt.
Yeah, Plan O and Wakefield, Massachusetts, Wakefield, Mass. Number four sixty-six Water Street.
Second. Second, thank you, Jim. All in favor? Bill? Did we lose him?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Aaron, we're gonna need. The chair to sign the application in the next day or so, so I can file with the town clerk. That's okay.
Okay. Get that taken care of.
Thank you. It can be by docu-sign. That's fine. Tom Mullin said that's fine. That's if that's easier.
Yeah, I'm I'm in town tomorrow for sure.
And I'm I'll get you the my lot, Aaron, the next couple of days.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
All right. Sorry, I've gone too far. Terrific. We've we've tackled item number six, the bylaw review committee update. The the meeting is, the next meeting is the eighteenth next week and. We'll we'll get Kevin our comments and. Item seven is the quick update on edits to the subdivision rules and regulations. Bill and I had two conversations with. With Bill Renault. He will get us. His edits and and. Corrections to it. He he'll be able to help, I think, resolve some of our. Formatting and 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 those problems. He also had some. Some thoughts. Let me get to my notes again. Thoughts about make making it a little little more concise. We talked about the site construction plan and maybe that was redundant, so. He thought maybe existing conditions in the demolition plan might help. Tackle that, so. We'll get him to explain his comments. We're thinking January, at the January ninth meeting. So I don't, Bill, any recollections on your point on your side?
Yes, just for the for the board's knowledge. It was a good conversation, our second conversation with Bill, once I was able to get on the line. I was sharing two opposite types of plans, sets of drawings. One was Clyde Court and showing prospect and how it was very minimal and the information was there, but also showing the complexity of Lovis. So if you do take a a look back and if anybody wants to see that the Lovis plans. I know, Matt, you're familiar with them. There's a lot of work in there and it it starts to show the reason why we have plans separated out. So we can see contour lines separate from existing buildings to be removed versus the new buildings. When that's all on the same planet, it's so hard to see and breaking out trees and planting in a different way. So there are reasons to have separate plans for legibility and understanding for our board and others who are reviewing. But I it was a really good discussion and engineer Bill Renaud is in a good place now where he understands what we're trying to achieve, so. It was a good meeting.
Yeah.
Thanks, Theo.
Sure. He suggested. Wilmington's subdivision rules and regulations and I will circulate that PDF to the board members. And Norwell also came up in the conversation. So and the the third item for us really is to. Think about how we address paper streets in in the regulations as opposed to, right, obviously, streets in existence. So and yeah, he had, he thought the erosion control looks good. Wilmington has a good section about the the expectation for the process of review. And some some other specifics. So, yeah. And maybe some additions to the utility plan, so we'll we'll get all get all of that in January and be able to. To schedule it out with our other. Our our other deliverables and everything that's going on. I know, Aaron, you were also on the call. Do you have any any other final comments? Okay.
No.
All right. Item eight on our agenda is a quick update on the master plan process.
I thought I'd have a better update for you guys by this meeting, but I don't. I'll be completely transparent. I think as of this time, a lot of my time has been. Dedicated to the bike ped plan and trying to get that finalized and moved along, as well as this MBTA community is doing some mapping with things like that, but. And some things we're going on at MAPC, so where we're at right now is I'm going through the document that was sent over before it goes to the public. And we are going to be working on potentially an executive summary of the document that was sent over, not working with the consultant to do that. And also going through the goals and objectives, just making sure that they align with what the survey results said and. Best practices and things like that. That's again been kind of put on the back burner, but I wasn't able to get really into all that detail last time. But I hope after the new year and the bike ped plan, hopefully wrapping up soon, not wrapping up, we'll be going into implementation after that, but. Where a lot of my time will be dedicated to reviewing that on a constant basis, that I'll be able to dedicate the the new year to. Moving this project along, so that's my update.
It's a wonderful update and. I really do appreciate all the work you're doing. On all these other items and then keeping the keeping the this two hundred and fifty-page doc, you know, editing that down and. Making it a lot more refined. All right.
Thank you.
Item nine, future agenda items. We can, I will. Be happy to entertain. Any suggestions that that y'all want to email? I think we know exactly what we're doing. Our our discussion topics tonight really do. Point our our map forward for the. Until at least the town meeting, so. Item ten, any items not not yet addressed tonight? Yeah, Bill?
Yeah, I'd like to, just to add on to what Aaron mentioned about the bike ped plan. Wonderful job by Bill Renaud and Aaron presenting last night at the town council meeting. It really set a positive path forward, no pun intended, for. The future of the bike ped plan, and it was nice to have input from both. Fire chief and police chief during that time, so thanks for all the effort and really happy with the direction it's going. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else otherwise?
If no other board members, I just wanted to highlight this. So on Thursday, I I think it falls in line pretty great with the MBTA community, so what we discussed tonight. Is I got a call from Secretary of Housing's office looking to say they wanted to have a celebration. Of the housing choice designated communities, which Wakefield was one of them for this year, as well as the housing choice grant. Recipients, which Wakefield was one of those this year as well, so we were joined by Secretary Augustus Augustus today. Secretary of Housing, he was named not too long ago and and so he came to Wakefield and presented. To the library and presented us with our grant as well as officially naming us a housing choice community. And so I think it just speaks volumes of all the work that's been done for housing here in the community and what we continue to do and. And Mike McLean did allude to this earlier, the vacancy rate in Massachusetts, you know, or not vacancy rate, vacancy rate. Is one point seven and, you know, I think we have a lot more work to do. In many ways at a local level differently than this MBTA communities, but. I think Wakefield should be very proud of ourselves that we're doing all the right things and I applause the planning board too. Because I know you guys were, you know, helped Paul Ravis before to get the mixed-use multifamily, and I don't think we'd be at this point. Right now if it wasn't for his hard work and all your hard work, so just wanted to make sure I, you know, gave credit where credit was due, so thank you.
Well, thank you too. That's a. That's terrific. All right.
And we got a grant to get a housing production plan. I forgot that. But I didn't see what the grant was for, to do a housing production plan, so another plan, but it has to be done, so.
Really valuable for sure, so. Terrific. Well, I would love a a motion to adjourn, so some folks can get dinner and other people can get rested to work on town business for tomorrow.
I had to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it then.
All right, thank you, Bill. Thank you, Matt. All in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so. Thank you, everybody, and yeah, I hope everybody's. Doing all right, so.